Is it the time that I have on my laptop?
It says it's 3:00.
But that's where I started.
Three is 3:03.
Good evening, and welcome to the City of Montgomery City Council Workshop Meeting for October 14th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a quorum, and it's exactly 5:01. We'll start off with pledges of leaders, if you'll please stand.
American flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, and God, indivisible.
Turn my bringer off. If God's please trying to bring her off, somebody not disturb, that'd be great. All right. Ms. Bevan, did we get anything for the public floor? Okay. We'll go on to the workshop agenda. Item number three on your agenda, discussion on the city's bonding capacity.
Unless you can project, we're not wanting you.
All right. Good. So the next few items, we'll kind of take in tandem. We'll introduce it with what I handed out, as Gillian is here to talk specifically about bonding and the water endurance of how all the pieces work together. So I'll start off with what is in front of you that are handed out. This is just kind of an overview, followed by the rates, impact fees. So we'll just kind of walk through this document, kind of remind everyone of the conversations we've had, what we're solving to today, and they talk about bonding capacity and then kind of the act forward. So any items in front of you, what this, we are trying to solve to right now is how do we fund the major projects that are on the immediate right? The water plant, the wastewater plant that are happening right now. You know, those two projects, you know, with construction in interior Tennessee, we're looking at $27 million worth of projects that are currently in design and will be built next year. So, you know, there's, it's not, as we've been talking about so many times, this isn't a one. There's many buckets that we have to be looking at and working through to figure out our funding options between impact fees, water sewer rates, bonding, et cetera. How do we actually fund these projects, which is what we're talking about now, for some kind? So what we're going to go through today, we'll give you an update of where you stand on impact fees, where you talk about the Texas Water Development Board state qualifying applications that Phil submitted earlier this year, and then we'll talk about that water sewer rate changes, which we talked about a couple months ago. So again, just bring everyone back up to speed. So impact fees. So back in September, y'all approved an increase here in impact fees of roughly 17% to the state. So if you remember, state law changed, but now you're limited to often even update those every three years. So we have to carry this out as far as we can, so that 17% is trying to get us as far as we can, but still meet the calculation requirements of the state. So if you look on the third page of your package, it's the one large holdout fee. This is kind of active developments. And when I say active, these are, they have an agreement, or the agreement is imminent or not. We have, you know, some escrow accounts on the date on the agenda later tonight. Those aren't included on here because they're so early, we don't want to count them, so they're something. So this is summary of what is out there active. Pull your kind of attention to the middle of the page, or actually start at the top. We pull that over and see the year we anticipate those fees being paid, what debt water and wastewater impact fee is estimated at based on their current connection to meter size, if they have any impact fee credits through development agreements. So these are for things like the old layers, the water line extension that was on your capital improvement plan, the less loans from Parkway water line extension, et cetera.
Real quick, before we go too far, when you say credits, have you already subtracted it from the impact fee, or is that yet to be subtracted?
So what your water and wastewater impact fee, those are the full amounts, and then the credits come off of that. So when you look at the projected balances at the next one, that does take into account the credits.
Okay.
So I'm just showing you also, you're, for example, Riley Section 1A, they had 195 of water impact fees, they used up 195 in credit on that because that cost the project more than. When you get down further, they will, the amount that they pay in water impact fees is greater than the actual cost of the project, so once they cover the cost of the project, all that will come to the city for the water.
So there will be a delta there? Right here, though, there's not going to be a delta. Everybody's at that capacity?
Correct.
Okay.
So when you get down to this projected impact fee balance, this is roughly where you're sitting today at 1.32. We expect by the end of this year, because there's a couple more plats rolling in, to be about 1.4 minor increase with a lot coming in 2026 and 2027, which if you didn't spend any of those funds, you would be sitting on a balance at the end of 2027, based on our projections of roughly 5.75.
Chris, is this calendar year, or is this our year?
So given our lack of control in the month they plaid, we're saying calendar. It is likely that they will be plating within the year 2027. If that happens in August or October, it's hard to say. Some of them, we have a better idea based on talking to them, but it depends on how early they decide.
Yeah, just curious, because for budgeting reasons, just, yes, going to that point, as if it's October, if it's calendar year, then that's still, that's our year, however, it's still January to December.
And we have, we don't show it here in our actual estimated months that we have shared for very good, looking into that point, but for some of these, it's just, it's semi moving target, this, for example, Legacy Road went ahead and platted early, because they're still building out the section versus we, Montgomery Binns is holding the plats until they get to closer to, you know, so just kind of, we have little control over time, you know, than the general estimate of the year. We try to be conservative. Here, we are on the side of pushing it back then.
So then in saying that, Montgomery Binns Section 4, we'll assume our today impact fees are not, because they haven't platted, not initial impact fee?
That's correct.
Okay.
So impact fees are assessed at high.
Time to find, right.
So anything, every one of this list that isn't platted already is subject to the impact.
Current data.
The higher rate. So a significant amount of money from impact fees coming in, which plays into the debt compensation, which I'm sure Gillian will talk. So go back to the first page of your packets. You did have your, so back in March, we submitted project information forms to the Texas Water Development Board. So these were for their state revolving funds, for their clean water and drinking water, and those are low interest rate loans that government publics, these are able to apply for and obtain. City has done this in the past for the water line replacement, it's a water plant improvement already in the city, we went through that for these same funding purposes. So as of today, the project information forums have made their shortlist for the Water Development Board, which is good. They are now going through the process of ranking them. We are not in the, there's, I think, is that 300 or so projects that are on their list, around the top 50, around the bottom 50, or somewhere in the middle of that list. However, from a timing standpoint, by the time they get through the ranking, they then ask us for full application. You submit the application, so the, as of today, Water Development was surprised that we were able to close on those loans, you know, within 12 months from now. So I mean, it's a long way out, and these projects are sooner. Now, again, we're looking at their options. We submitted more projects than just the water plant and the wastewater plant, so there's still some options there, but that's where those stand. And then the final piece is water and sewer rates. And I'm going out where, if you want, Gillian to jump in a lot, about going in.
I have a question. Did we ever reach out to Rebecca Ainsley? Rebecca Ainsley? That was the name I gave them a while back. She's the Director of Grants and Community Development for Montgomery County?
I did not. I did not. So what the two design projects you have, they want to grant options as well, are in their contracts, they came out with the Water Development Board ones, but I have not had a conversation with questions on water and sewer projects. I know we had, that wasn't TDM call, that was not for recently, but no, I did not. And I probably didn't think about that. So then, if we get to the water and sewer rate discussion again, it's been, so last time the city did a rate increase was 2018, so the water sewer rates have been whole static since then. And we're at the point in order to, you know, as we did with the last round of COs, with revenue support, and so from water and sewer revenues, it's issued that debt, and so with the amount that we're going to issue, it's some combination of back COs, that we have impact fee backing, as well as revenue backing, that we're looking at. So what we'll go through now is, again, we've seen similar before, but we just want to go back over as things have changed, and wait for additional water and sewer revenue to come in to be able to, one, fund projects as well as issue debt against that water and that revenue. So I'm going to just flip over two pages, to the next page, page four, in your packets that will have a little bit of stuff, and color pages are a lot. Last time we discussed, we, the discussion was how do we move more of the burden onto, off of the single family measures? And so we went through that analysis here. So what we're showing is, we took the 2024 user data, that's when the process started, as kind of a static point in time. So the number of connections, the usages, et cetera, were from there. Obviously, there's been growth since then. From a conservative standpoint, the rates and the additional revenues are based on that static number. That's going to increase as we continue to grow, as well as our expenses. We're producing more water, there's more chemicals, more time to do that. This is just a static snapshot to get, again, trying to be on the conservative side, you get a wet year, that's aggressive payment from water sales, et cetera. So looking at this bottom section, you have your single family rates with our proposed changes, we'll go into detail. This is what the average bin and max bill would change from. So for your average user, right now, you're existing what they would pay on an average bill of $65.09 a month, they would be looking at 77.54, $12.45 increase on a monthly bill. For your minimum users, those people that use a bare minimum amount of water, it's about a $7 increase to their bill per month, and that is inclusive of all groundwater reduction fees, loan star fees, water sewer fees, all of that, they make it 10 to 1. So you're looking at a $7 increase to your minimum user, oh, since 2018, effectively, since that was your last, last anchor. So from a percentage standpoint, it says 20%, but from a dollar standpoint, I'm looking at $7 a month on the minimum, $12 on the average user, the max user, so again, this is from actual user data, someone was using a ton of water, so that's why there's this $800 increase to the bill, but they were also paying an average water bill of $2400 if they did not water. And then that carries on to commercial, multifamily, institutional irrigation rates. And pull your attention down to the next page, bottom of page five, there's a lot of numbers in there. In general, those increases across the board, trying to put more on the commercial, institutional users and the single family. On this bottom table of page two of five, you'll see how it compares to, you know, to see the rank. So when you take your proposed rates that are in here, with all the groundwater fees, rivers, flooding fees, et cetera, compare that to Conroe or Magolia, using single family as the example of the average user, about 6,300 gallons a month, your bill would be 77.54, that same bill with the city of Conroe would be $100.45, and the city of Magolia would be 85.14. So you're still within, you know, in your comparable rates to your neighbors, and the makeup of that is obviously different.
So the numbers that you come up with, these are numbers that are recommended? Or are these numbers that we basically need to pass in order to work with our, come up just, then all the numbers we need with the bonds?
So that is my point. So with all these changes, when we look at a static data, you're looking at about a additional $1 million a year, $1.1 million a year of revenue, so $90,000 a month in water and sewer revenue, which is about a 37% across the board increase in revenues. That amount, if you took all of those dollars and currently roughly $75,000 of revenue gets to $1 million in capacity or issuing debt, so that would get you about 45 and a half of that $27 million target, and then the rest would come from using the impact fees that helps support, which Gillian, yeah, which Gillian, the way you worded it, is the bonding side. But this is what we need today. This is what we need to do. From a long-term standpoint, this should, this should be something that we look at annually, and just continue to, and ultimately get to a point where our water and sewer fund is generating a small surplus each year, so we're able to put away funds to decide some of these things come up or not. Going from 2018 to 2025 with no rate increases, and kind of the timing of these progress need to get done, these are what changes need to be made in order to.
So then the next, next question, to your point of we should maybe do every two-year increase, a more incremental, is that going to be an option? Can we use that as an option here, where instead of hitting them all at once, we split it in half and do it over two years?
So we, we can look at that. I think that if you did a lot, so roughly about half of the revenue is coming from single family. So it's, okay, if we stair-step the single family, we're going to be cutting 20% of that number back. So tonight is not an obvious action, and come back with coordinates. So if that is something you want to look into, I think it's, so here's what we're comfortable with, here's what we would like, let us run those numbers with, with financial advisors. Okay, if we did, instead of the 20%, $7 increase, we did a $4 increase, 3% increase.
Yeah, right.
And do it over two, what does that look from a cash flow perspective? Again, what we haven't, there's lots of areas we haven't run that, that is often the whole thing we needed in this number soon, in order to continue to fund the water and sewer account and cover the debt.
Absolutely.
And, you know, from a, you know, what we would like to do is, okay, let's get through what we need. This $27 million gives us plants built, and then every year, do this, like, about this time, budget is set, we want to start planning for a surplus in that budget, which we look at water rates, putting in the water rates this time of year, we're increasing here at the lower usage times, so it's better to increase in the middle of the summer when usage is already high. It helps kind of stair-step into that. And again, in the next years, if we set our ultimate goal, we want to have 25% surplus in the account. Okay, we're not going to do that all in one year, let's over the next three, four, five years, incrementally increase over operating at a surplus. And again, with as much growth as we're having in water and sales, it's a moving target.
Right, it's suggestible, absolutely.
That way, it's, you know, kind of get what we need today, stair-step into where we're working off a more of a cushion that we're not having to do this.
Just my personal preference, I'd rather stair-step into this over two-year period instead of just slamming somebody with the, over here, a 48% increase.
Right. And if we can look at the stair stepping, I think this is the ultimate where we do in, now, we have to clarify, is there certain categories you would want us to try to stair-step before others? Because again, we're, most of our users are sitting in 50% of revenue, single family. So, you know, obviously, change is there, make a bigger impact to the total, but also that's a voting base, into trying to balance this out. So I guess, clarify, stair-step all across the board versus, hey, let's look at stair-step in single family and refine.
You want me to clarify? I would like to just see us do all across the board, just do half this year, half next year, but if that's not feasible, then it's not feasible.
Sure, it'll come in, if you show enough revenue to cover the debt, you know, in the next two, I assume, you know, that's where it'll come in, and whether you can raise enough money to do that, because that's exactly what they're going to look at towards your revenue stream, and impact fees, of course.
I agree with Casey, though, on stair-stepping. I think we should stair-step across the board.
I mean, I know we can't take our sweet time and do it over five years, but if we could just cut it in half.
Make it less painful.
Yeah. Yeah, we can definitely run the options, see what makes sense, what gets, what makes the numbers work from a financial advisor standpoint, and then kind of begin back this this amount of time, and then you're stair-stepping after that point. That makes, it's here's the right kind of, of advice. So when you go through the rest of the packet, three to five, those are the individual tiers of the rate. Okay, if you're here for information, I'd like for you guys to kind of summarize it upfront. A couple things that aren't in here on purpose because they're not the drivers that we're going to go to actual action for rate orders, changes, out of district, out of city customers, so how we address those, they will pay slightly more than in city, where most of those customers are along MLK, where those out of city customers aren't, so we're not looking at, this is a 5X increase or anything like that, just they're non-taxing, non-tax taxpayers, so there needs to be an additional rate there. But again, not looking to make it more, so you get where it is. Temporary water service, that is something that we can put a premium on, those are builder meters that come in for, you know, convenience of buying water for construction, et cetera. So again, we can work that way, but it's not something that we wanted to bake into your rate analysis on funding, because builder meters are just, they're in, they're quick for temporary, they're not a normal revenue generator. The other thing, kind of, Casey, to your point of stair-stepping, is this is also based on a snapshot. So the increase in usage and connections increases that much, and so we're able to pull that down to do so. So kind of just overall, summarize, and ask your questions, and then should really go to his pieces. You know, rate increase of the, since 2018, trying to, you know, kind of make one annual debt, you know, on a minimum, he throws up bucks, $12 bucks on the average due to the first single family over that time period, and then continuing to do this on an annual basis. Not saying that every year we're going to do 20% by any means, but a small, you know, adjustment each year to stay ahead of it, start to generate a bit of surplus in the account. So we're, we have this core flexibility, it's something, nothing happens, something breaks, so we have surplus work on. Do you have any questions? Me, not to turn it over to Mr. Gillian to talk through the bonding process and timing and recommendations, but then just.
When would this going to affect? We decided to do something.
So the next step to be, is if Director from Councils can bring back the coordinates to the next meeting, the November 4th, 18th, meeting with the proposed changes, after we go to the stair-step, we would have that agenda item on that. We'll go through the stair-step option, at least at that time, we'll let that house know if changes are needed, but ideally, this is something that gets put in place before the event. And then from a bonding and a timing standpoint of, I mean, the projects, ideally, both of the water plant and sewer plant projects are going to bid first of the year, we're starting construction by March of next year, to keep those projects moving forward and being just delivered. So we would, before we also sign a construction contract for $12 million, we want to have a loan closed before we do that. So the timing would be, you know, in my wheelhouse, so that the next meeting, you would issue the notice, that has to be published 45 days, 45 days, then you go through the actual process. And so then November, your 45 days ends in January, more or less, so you're doing your actual sale at the January meeting, or your first February meeting, and then closing 30 days later. I'll turn it over to Mr. Yan.
Good evening. That was a pretty good summary of the process for issuing certificates of obligation. Some members of council may remember, just about two years ago, we, City went through the same process of issuing certificates of obligation. As Chris mentioned, this, the notice of intent that she would consider, if you were, Council wanted to consider at the next meeting in November, Alan can correct me if I'm saying anything wrong with this, but it's going to, that notice would state a not to exceed amount, the council intends to issue certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed the ceiling, you can issue less than that, you can issue more without, you know, doing it over again, but so from the date of first publication of the paper, that would take about, you can't sell bonds until, can't take action on the ordinance until 45 days from that first publication. So based on that timeline of council, it sounds like the, because of the meeting schedule in November, that might have to take place on, I mean, in November, you pushed it to December, I, you know, that's kind of likely, you know, pushing days out, you know, 30 days, so.
So you say we should have a special meeting in November, then, just for this? If it's possible?
Yeah, I was assuming.
It's regular meeting, okay. I'm sorry, I was thinking, you were thinking that a regular meeting would be tough, okay. Yeah, if we miss that timeline, then, okay.
So that, if council's ready, you know, we won't rush in into anything, that's just kind of a, let you know what to expect based on, you know, Chris's, his schedule of weapons contracts and getting it to their turn. So as far as timing, there's any questions, I'll ask before we go on. So in the packet, I believe, maybe, perhaps, works back, there's a little presentation.
It's going to be online? Is it online? Is it online? Yes, okay. It's online. What does it look like?
Not sure if we can see that, but the purpose of this was to, we looked at a, looked at the 20 and 30-year amortization for, from the $27.4 million project cost, and that, we were, the purpose of it, to try to see how long, basically, well, affordability of this essentially. So at the top, you know, in the previous meetings, the city's considered, you know, what it's going to be, using some property taxes to pay for this, and some utility rates, I, from my understanding, that since this might be, that this will all be on the rate pair, and I certainly encourage you to do that, just to keep, you know, let the utility fund stand on its own, and let the general fund stand on its own. So I've taken the top left shows, the, looking at the net revenues of the utilities, water and sewer fund. This is from fiscal year ending 9/34, so this is a year old, but your gross revenues at, your revenues after your expenditures and not including, or adding back depreciation, were just over $1 million, in fact, just under $1.1 million. That's cash that you have to pay, the revenue is available to pay debt service. So the field below, we're looking at the, under the heading C, shows the, on the column, shows. the, under the heading C, shows the, uh, on the column, shows your self-supported debt or your utilities' supported debt, that's roughly about 685,000 a year, and towards the right under the heading D, proposed debt service, this is just an estimate on the 20-year, uh, amortization, payment's a little over $2 million, roughly speaking, so column shows your grand total, and it's, um, you know, the existing debt plus the proposed, just about looking at 2.7 million dollars, so you have a million dollars in net revenues, uh, to pay all that debt service, uh, if, if nothing else changes, no, you don't make any changes to your utility rates, uh, now, what column, F shows that, that's, that's shortfall, that's how much you got to make up in all of them.
Those are scary numbers.
Yeah, well, so we have, we included the impact fees, um, under column, uh, the heading B, and I apologize, that's a typo, it says cap fees, it should say, uh, impact fees, so based on what the, uh, Chris has told me about the projected balance on those cap fees, it looks like, these are estimates, but, uh, it looks like it's, you know, by 2028, um, the balance for those impact fees might be about 7.4 million dollars, so the idea was this, of this was just to look at how long, you did nothing else, if you just used those impact fees to kind of float, float the debt payments, um, you know, just essentially depleting your, your assets, it could take you out to, I believe, about 2031, 2030, maybe half a year, uh, before you, before those impact fees would run out. So if you were, just, just like your savings account, paying your mortgage with your savings account, so you're not adding any new revenues in, so, uh, with the 30-year amortization at this, you get another, like, a year, year and a half, maybe, um, but this was just as, to, to illustrate that, you know, like, it's kind of a bridge, if you wanted to, if you wanted to slowly, you know, kind of feather the, the rate increases in, this could, this could kind of be a bridge to get you there, um, so, uh, I certainly can provide more scenarios for you and, you know, looking at, um, different amortizations or different combinations of paying down the, you know, paying down the impact fees versus rate increases, and I believe as Chris said, the proposed, uh, fee schedule would generate another million dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
So the column A would essentially double, so the, the proposed rate schedule, I mean, based on estimated usage distance, that results, water service and stuff, it's a variation, but roughly 1.09 million, which is right with the number that you're on that, that form.
So then, that means in G, we could take a million dollars off of all those big numbers on the far right, essentially?
Uh, column F would be shortfall would be a million dollars.
Okay, there you go, there, okay, so going down to five digits, or six digits instead of seven?
So, Brent, has the city ever done a line of credit? Is that even legal?
Have a line of credit?
Yeah.
We have credit, right?
No, no, a line of credit, it's, it's way better to finance, it's way, it's way, way better.
Yeah, actually.
Because we have great cash.
Check this Water Development Board, if we can get some of that, that we might get some rates like that, it's not a line of credit, but it's, it's cheap money, if you will, and I did check, you know, on grants and stuff, and, and with the way this community is, it's, it's just going to be a no for the most part, if it is, it's not going to be a lot, the thing you have to calculate into this is how fast do the new homes come online, because, you know, it's, scaring out, this growth is fast, we're not, we're not reaping the benefit of that yet, but, you know, hopefully when your impact fees slow down, your revenues crank up because you're, you're adding all the new houses, so that's the balancing act that we're in, is, you know, it has to be done, or you get into trouble like some of the communities around, because they have no money and they have no infrastructure, so where do you go? You know, I mean, it's, it's a tough one, it really is.
Yeah, I was just looking at this, because if we, if, if you set this up on a 30-year line of credit with a 15-year open on it, your interest rate would be 7%, but with our cash flow, our total interest paid would be half, right? Our tip at the end would, we're probably going to pay at 4%, we're going to end up paying about 50% over and above on our tip, total interest paid, and we'd end up probably around 18 if we had, because of our cash flow and the way that they calculate the interest on a, on line of credit, it's done daily, re, refigured, every time money goes in, your capital, your principal comes down, right?
I understand, I don't even know if that was even legal, I think.
I, so I just wondered if a city had ever done that, because it's, um, oh, yeah, because it's, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful way to finance, I think.
But I just think if there's a, if there's any slippage, I mean, if there's tariffs go up and then you can't get wood, or if, um, there's another COVID, I mean, something like that, like, we were on the hook for, we were projecting for future growth without it stopping this, this train of development, and if the train stops or slows, what do we do then? And I know none of us have a crystal ball to look into the future, but it's making my heart palpitate seeing this, but it's necessary as well, um, I get it, but it's, it's a big undertaking.
Yeah, it's, it's a common theme, you know, I was reading an article recently in Dallas, you know, and they're trying to, to balance that, trying to build roads as fast as they can, and infrastructure as fast as they can, but they don't have the money to build it as fast as it's coming, so, you know, you end up putting moratoriums or stopping it somewhere, you know, and try to pace it, but it, like you said, a crystal ball is needed to really.
Yeah, so then, with your experience, Alan, with your experience, is this a very big gamble, you mean, like, is this a really big gamble for a city like ours, or is it common practice, normal, I know we've done it before, but I'm just saying, like, is this a really big gamble, or is this kind of a gamble?
Uh, it is a little gamble, but it, it's normal with the type of growth that you have, because.
I just didn't know if we were really stepping out there and going big, just to cover ourselves with what's coming, or if we're going out necessary, so you can go big, which means a little bit fluffy, necessary, which means it's going to work.
Well, you pretty much know, based on the projects, what you have.
Yeah.
You can kind of see that that's necessary no matter what, so it's kind of the bill that they will come, you know, theory, for lack of better, uh, but you, you also have all of this money, this money's not being spent in one, one moment, so there are options to, to, you know, look at if we get into a position that is not, you know, like, the world stops, they don't keep coming, uh.
I just, you know, with that one development that put in a $2 million wall and found two springs on there, and now that's all, it's like, I don't, we don't know what we don't know, what, what if that happens over here, where Drive Point is, and all of that, that's going to be a big, and that's a big oopsie daisy, right, so.
I also see what Chris put out here, where, uh, Vancouver event, section three, they're waiting until demand picks up, so is that an issue elsewhere?
But they've started, they've started.
They've started construction now of the actual, the actual infrastructure for section three, it's only, now.
Okay.
Uh, they, they did start, originally they were going to start that last year.
Yeah, I was saying, what's that?
Uh, so they, they took a big stall while interest rates were working their way out, and they picked back, um, section four is a little bit longer, leave, specific on every day, because they had to build traffic signal for that, uh, I haven't sat out, but, you know, with, for a fact, is, is all of these projects are not, when you look at all the developments in the city, it is not the, I'm going to pick up buildings of Vancouver, you know, they're sitting on a draft development agreement, these are, the need is based on what are, what do we have, what are the sections going in, what are the active agreements, the HEBs and the Riley's and the Tri.
It's not, it's, they're coming, they're here, so.
Correct, it, it's, it's a timing game, it's really, you know, kind of the, the balls will push a lot to kind of waiting for that right time, it's, because, you know, you don't want to build too early, maybe sit on a bunch of capacity, you don't want to build too late and end up in, in the opposite situation, and, you know, kind of right now is, we're right on that line, you know, we got to build it, uh, and it's, yeah, they're not, uh, getting into the actual details of the project, if everything stopped, there's still a benefit of those projects, water plant four provides pressure stability to the west side of the city that has lower pressure inflows, you know, the sewer plant over here at Town Creek, that split flows between the two, we're not pumping all the way around the city, so even if everything stopped, there's a benefit to those facilities, which again, I don't have a crystal ball on, you know, highlights of it, it's not a stop, yeah, it'll have, it'll have to be everything that's even active right now is going to stop.
Correct.
And that's what I was warning, correct.
So basically, you're telling us we need to decide between 20 or 30, that's our choice?
Yes, that's it.
Uh, that's a, I'm going to throw him out of the question.
James, can I ask a question to make sure I understand the church, so, so the, the revenue assumptions are no change from 2024?
That's correct.
So the, the shortfall column F is what is sort of anticipated to be paid up out of the rate increases?
A portion of, yeah, that column F, does, none of this assumes any rate increases, that's just wrong, right, so.
Right, so you're going to have both the rate increases coming in, and also.
Growth.
Potentially more houses using water or businesses, so your revenue side is the equation, these are pretty conservative numbers.
Okay.
So.
That's the word I was looking for, conservative. It's a little bit aggressive.
These, these are big numbers, and it's, it's a little scary, no doubt about that, but, but they've put together pretty conservative numbers, and that should be.
And I, based on, the last time we did this too, you put together conservative numbers, and we exceeded what you projected, so.
So where do we do our budgets?
I like conservative.
Do our budget conservative.
Right, absolutely, but the interest rate at 4.8, that's just what's rolling right now?
Yes, that's right, but, uh, that's kind of an average interest, which is constant for a 30-year term, and, uh, shorter 20 years, maybe under 4.5% or so. Regarding 20 for, 20 years versus 30 years, uh, I would suggest you, you would have to issue as short as you think you can afford, but of course, it's, it's reasonable to, if the plant's going to last for 40 years, then it's, I would say it's reasonable to issue finance number 25 or 30 year period, so, and of course, if it's going to be benefiting the citizens of Vancouver for the next 30 years, then it makes sense that people who move in, into town 20 years from now will also have a paper of concern.
I'm just concerned about what future other needs that we may have, um, and carrying too much debt, this, then we go out too far, I'd like to get it paid for and done, because I don't know what we don't, what we're going to need in the future and don't want to tie up that money.
The thing that's really important, your utility rates, because that, that function, that's a business versus the way the general fund works, so you want it to be, just like a business, where it's a profitable business, and by setting the proper rates and reviewing those, often keeping that, you know, percentage, whatever it is, above keeps you from getting in trouble with, you know, your water leaks and all the other things that could happen along the way, because your, your stock will be old.
Since I've been here, we haven't upped the water, right, and, and.
2018.
Yeah, since that, so how often, so my question is, how often does that normally happen?
Well, normally you review it often, but as you're.
We reviewed it before.
As all these new people start coming in, it, it may go the other way, really, I mean, or you may be, we're fine, you know, so it's not necessarily just to raise the rates constantly, it's just to know where you stand, you want to look at your revenue and expenses, you know, right now we have unusual expenses because they're big expenses, but once we get past that, then we get to, you know, capacity in 10 years, not much more growth, then you just maintain and probably go back and fix the roads and water and sewer that's gotten.
I know, we talked about it, not raising it, I was just curious if we, if it's a two-year cycle, three-year cycle, we've talked about it every year, but we've not been relaxed.
Years ago, I think by 2015, there was a rate plan built in place, and there was a three-step kind of increase to the three.
Yes.
So this is, you know, the initiation drives, we're about to do number three, so this is, this is the number three plus.
What's the, um, I think we've asked this before, I just don't remember, with the improvements that we're proposing, what is our actual population capacity, household capacity?
So your water, I don't have, I, I, I don't, uh, it, so your, your water plant, with this water plant project, it takes you, you know, through projected growth of kind of everything into the 20th, because the biggest thing right now, you're looking at factors, the elevated storage tank, which is all the way back, and then another well on that side, the sewer plant is more of a stair step approach, uh, so this will increase 300,000 pounds a day, you know, four, in the next, like, four years or so, a lot of sewer plant expansion to put on that, it won't be the same scale, so we'll have the, this facility, the lift station, and everything will be sized for expansion, just like Stewart Creek Plant is, that lift station is sized for expansion, uh, to be able to make it a little bit easier, but we want it to, it also gives us the, the balance of if we have more development on that side of the city or this side of the city.
So is there an expansion built into this yet, or just?
Into this 27 million, but these are the immediate projects, on your plan, the, I do, look at, quarter, that is definitely baked in there, uh, and that's where, you know, get through the immediate, it's now, again, annually, what does the next five years, 10 years look like, what does that cash flow look like, if you go add another, you know, $8 million debt in year 2032, what do we do now to help stair step to that point? Uh, this is just an initial.
They're trying to build the infrastructure now, with plants expanding.
Correct.
So. Chris, would you expand on the water storage?
Yes, so for TCQ rules, you're limited to 2,500 connections without elevated storage tank, so this.
So where are we now?
1,400, more or less, um, some better, no, uh, so, and so this water plant issue, you can go over 2,500 based on the number of, then you can get the total capacity divided by number of connections, right, I have the number of, I don't have it.
But I don't know if y'all, Chris, if y'all put together when this city is at capacity, meaning there is no more green grass to develop on, what is the projected, uh, population?
We do have that, I do not know the number off the top of my head.
You got a crystal ball, then.
I just ran it for our.
Was it 9,000 houses?
Little more than half, but it depends on the density, of course.
Sure.
Depends on the commercial, of course, where you're at, but it says at the medium density, it'll be around 12,000, if you go a little higher density, a little more apartments, that kind of stuff, then it would be closer to 20.
And that's head count or household?
Us people.
Population.
Population.
There's one interesting thing, with all that, is with the ETJ rules and the exclusions, it's also kind of a moving target at this point to.
That was, that was, the one I was specifically talking about was the current.
Got it.
Inside city limits and the total lane available, which is about 60% right now, according to.
Yes.
It's available.
Interesting, and we think we have traffic now.
I've got to keep that in mind.
I know, Tom's the traffic, traffic Tom.
Flying cars.
Flying cars, that's, okay, that's just, that's mind-blowing, really, to think about those numbers, um, but at the, at the pace that we're moving along, it's 20 years, 15 years, not far from us, yeah, okay.
We're trying to project the, the size of the city hall municipal building, because what does that look like in, in employees in 10 years, you know, that's why we were looking at those numbers.
Yeah, scary, okay, great job, thank you. Next on our agenda is our number four, discussion on the city utility rates, just for, uh, we're at 5:49, just be mindful, the next item.
Yes, and we covered it. Yes, and we covered it.
Oh, those are, okay, I didn't know. All right, council inquiry?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The antiques people submitted a request for the antique show next year, it was turned down. Do we know why?
For the community center specifically? That, that was because it was in conflict with the election. Is that all you could?
I didn't know, I just saw it on Facebook, people complaining, that's all.
Well, and so she couldn't move it due to the dealers needed that weekend, because they're trying to parlay off the Round Top Spring Show, they're going to come here, but it's an election weekend, and so, and now that the election can't happen here, it's going to happen at the community center, and that's a big part of Antique Festival.
Okay, that's, I'm just curious.
No, it's good to have it on the record.
Yeah.
Yes, it's good to know this on Facebook. I didn't recognize any of those, just local people that live in town.
I want to take a motion to adjourn, if there's nothing else.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Motion by Ms. Fox, that we adjourn. Second by Mr. Gilovich. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have the motion carries, it is 5:51, we will adjourn this meeting. Mind me. Yeah, I saw the way it was written, as if the city was being.
You were close to 6 o'clock.
Ugly.
It will be, this is a special meeting.
It's unfortunate, because.
Yeah, the next meeting starts.
We'll go back to that one here in just a few minutes.
They don't.